Good evening. Thank you for coming to tonight's meeting of Thursday, May 18th, 2023, for the Marlington Board of Education. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Josh Hagan.
Here.
Aaron Humphreys.
Here.
Kathy Krebko.
Here.
Mark Ryan.
Here.
Jonathan Swift.
Here.
Nace Minor.
Here.
Thank you. Reading of the mission statement. In collaboration with staff, community, parents, and students, the Marlington Local School District will develop lifelong learners who understand and apply knowledge and demonstrate excellence in pursuing the highest standards with effective intervention to challenge every student. Adoption of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the following agenda?
So moved second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Jonathan Swift.
Yes.
Josh Hagan.
Yes.
Karen Humphreys.
Yes.
Kathy Krebko.
Yes.
Mark Ryan.
Yes.
Special presentations.
Okay, so we're gonna start off with our special presentation tonight with our Students of the Month. So we're gonna start with our May Students of the Month. So I can have Mr. Farrell come up and we'll start with the high school. We have a lot of special presentations tonight.
Good evening. I have the honor of recognizing two students from the high school tonight. Our first Elks Student of the Month is Corinne Greiner. Corinne, come forward, please. Corinne is the daughter of Lisa Stubber and Eric Scott, and Chris and Susan Greiner. She is a member of National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, Character Counts Club, Spanish Club, Rotary Interact Club, a Duke Crew Leader, and is President of the Student Council. Corinne is a captain on the varsity sideline and competition cheer teams. She is a tutor at the elementary schools and former youth cheer coach. In her free time, she enjoys spending time with her friends and family. Following graduation, Corinne plans to attend Kent State University. Corinne's teachers say she is a very mature young woman who has confidence and poise when she is in front of an audience. I can attest to that. She spoke today in front of about 700 people at our awards assembly and did a fantastic job. They can count on her to volunteer and present on the first day of speeches. She takes a leadership role when working with others while still making her classmates feel comfortable. Corinne is also careful with her work, wanting to understand mistakes, to correct and learn from them. Corinne, it's my pleasure to recognize you as an Elks Teen of the Month. Congratulations. Our other Elks Teen of the Month at the high school is Doug Saner. Is Doug here? Okay, alright. I'll still read about Doug. A few words about him. Doug is the son of Brandon and Kara Saner. He is a math and science tutor and captain on the varsity soccer team. Doug is a member of the National Honor Society, Character Counts Club, and is a Duke Crew Leader. He is President of Rotary Interact Club, Treasurer of Student Council, Treasurer of Spanish Honor Society, and Treasurer of Robotics Club. In his free time, Doug enjoys going to the movies, playing poker with friends, and putting together jigsaw puzzles. And following graduation, Doug plans to attend the University of Akron to pursue a degree in mathematics. Doug's teachers say he's an amazing student, athlete, and role model here at Marlington. Doug's a leader both in and out of the classroom. His work ethic in the classroom and athletics is second to none. In the classroom, he's highly organized and always has his assignments done completely neatly and on time. He arrives early to class every day and is extremely polite and respectful. He always has a positive attitude and is enthusiastic about learning. Out of the classroom, Doug is an exceptional role model for his peers. He is a leader in our school and on the soccer field and is extremely deserving of this award. Let's give Doug a round of applause. Next up to present is middle school principal, Mr. Rizlet. Middle School would like to represent or recognize our two Students of the Month. First up, Emma Boyce. Emma's the daughter of Tia and Shane Boyce. Emma's a great student and plays volleyball and softball. She's a hard worker who always strives to turn in great work. Emma's quiet but always works behind the scenes. She's the one cheering everyone else on, not thinking about herself. She's kind to everyone and willing to lend a hand when needed. Emma's a wonderful student. She's always well-prepared for class, follows classroom procedures, and is respectful to those around her. Emma is set apart by her willingness to work hard. You can count on her to do her very best, no matter the task or assignment. She's very well-deserving of this recognition. These are things that Emma's teachers had to say about her. We're very proud of Emma Boyce. Next up, Reese Clayton. Reese is the son of Christie and Trent Clayton. This is what his teachers have to say about him. Reese always comes into class with a positive attitude, ready to learn and to do good work. He's a caring individual who helps everyone who needs help throughout the day. Reese is a quiet, determined young man. He works very hard in everything he does. If Reese is unsure of what to do, he'll ask for help instead of skipping over the task or assignment. He's very conscientious, too. His teachers made sure to add and make sure that I said that Reese Clayton is a gentleman. He'll always say good morning and ask how teachers and peers' days are going. You'll also find Reese holding doors for others when the situation presents itself. Reese is an extremely hard worker who tries his best always. He's a pleasure to have in class. The middle school is very proud of Reese Clayton. Next up is Mrs. Weber in Lexington Elementary.
Good evening. I have the honor of recognizing fifth grade Lexington Kiwanis Student of the Month, Ms. Eliza McNutt. Eliza was selected to be Student of the Month by her teachers because she's shown continuous improvements since the beginning of the school year. She is always eager to learn and participate in class discussions. Eliza is also very polite, kind, and respectful. She loves to help others, including her teachers. She can always be counted on by her teachers to get a smile from in the morning and have a good night at the end of the day. Great job, Eliza. Continue to brighten everyone's day. Additionally, additionally, she enjoys learning about history and social studies. She lives with her mom, her dad, her older brother Evan, who's about to graduate, and she enjoys going camping, bowling, and most any outdoor activity. And she has four cats and one dog. In the future, she would like to play sports as long as possible. She'd also like to become a veterinarian and own her own farm and have a happy, healthy life. Things that she enjoys include softball, basketball, volleyball, and any free time that she has, she enjoys sports. She also loves to be outside, and she likes to get muddy, and she enjoys mudding, cookout, swimming, and being outside. Congratulations, Eliza. Next up, Mrs. Mort, Marlboro Elementary.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to introduce to you Marlboro Elementary's May Kiwanis Student of the Month, Haley Zorn. Little bit about Haley from her teachers. Haley has an incredible never-give-up attitude. She is resilient and perseveres through her academic work to always find success. Haley is a supportive and encouraging friend to all of her peers. Haley shows excellent Duke Pride behaviors and is a role model for other students. She is a consistent worker and compassionate friend. Our hopes for Haley are that she never changes who she is. Continue to do great things, Haley. Little more about Haley. Her favorite subject in school is science because Mr. Greco makes it fun with his fishing and hunting stories. Some special things about Haley's family. Mom and dad are Whitney and Adam. She has a cat named Millie. As a family, they like playing board games together. They especially enjoy going to Haley's soccer tournaments. They also enjoy going to South Carolina to visit family. When they visit South Carolina, they spend time biking, going to the pool, and swimming together at the beach. Haley's future plans. Haley wants to visit Hollywood Studios as she is a big Star Wars fan. Her long-term plans. There are two things that Haley really loves doing: playing soccer and arts and craft activities. In fact, she has played soccer most of her life. And Haley has an art station in her basement, so that is why she wants to be an art teacher and soccer coach for her future career. In Haley's free time, Haley plays on two different soccer teams, Marlington and Eagles Select. She plays wing for Marlington and defense for her Eagles team. She is really enjoying her more recent role of playing offense. Haley also likes hanging out with her friends, being silly, and having fun. Her good friend described Haley as "very adventurous," as someone who enjoys hiking in the nature center where dad works. She often hikes with dad, which makes it even more fun. Congratulations, Haley Zorn, Marlboro's Kiwanis Student of the Month for May. Next up, Washington Elementary, Mr. Spandiel.
Okay, I don't believe Braxton is here tonight. Braxton? Okay. Well, we're gonna read about him anyway. We are proud to present Braxton Baum as this month's Kiwanis Student of the Month. Braxton's a fifth grader at Washington. He was selected as a Student of the Month because of his consistent work ethic and quiet leadership he demonstrates in the classroom each day. He is a kind and quiet leader in the classroom, a loyal friend, and seeks to do his best on every assignment he completes. Braxton never gives up when he faces a challenge and encourages others to keep going as well. Braxton has grown tremendously this year. We are proud of his accomplishments and look forward to seeing what he does next year at the middle school. Braxton's favorite subject in school is math. At home, he has two dogs and two cats, and he lives at home with his brother, his sister, and his mom and dad. In the future, Braxton would love to go and visit Tennessee. In his free time, he plays soccer and enjoys hanging out with his friends. Braxton Baum.
Okay, good evening. We're continuing on with our presentations tonight. So every year, the Board, or the superintendent, has an opportunity to honor our Folk Scholarship winners. So I just want to give a brief overview of what the Folk Scholarship is for everybody in the audience. Richard and Bernine Folk were Marlington residents. They farmed in the new Baltimore area. Mrs. Folk was a farmer and a teacher at Marlboro Elementary School. They married in 1941. However, they did not have any children. Mr. Folk donated $500,000 from their estate after the death to honor his wife. The donation was intended to establish a scholarship to benefit the children of Marlington. The overriding philosophy of the scholarship was the award based on the principles of Mr. and Mrs. Folk, which was financial need, effort, potential, commitment, and perseverance. The committee this year had 20 applicants, and they were able to award all 20 applicants anywhere from the range of $1,000 to $2,500. So at this time, I'm going to, if they're here, we're going to bring them up and present them with their award. So please hold your applause to the end, and we'll see how many of the 20 are here tonight. So we have Kayden Bates. He'll be attending Bowling Green State University. He'll be studying the area of health science. Rachel Frank. She'll be attending University of Mount Union, psychology. If I say your major wrong, you can correct me. You're good. Connor Evinich, alumni. He's currently attending the University of Finley. He's in business marketing. So this is a renewable scholarship for the people out there. So as long as our alums continue to apply, they have an opportunity to continue to receive scholarship money. Kaitlin Engelhardt. No, let's see, Kaitlin. Okay. Blake Howard. There's Blake. He'll be at the University of Mount Union, studying for biology. I do not see her. Emma Jackson. Emma plays on our softball team. I think they had their district final today in Jefferson. They did win one, nothing. So it was a nice win for our... So they're still traveling back, so I think that's why Emma's not here. Connor Battershell. Saw him. He'll be attending the University of Cincinnati in Electrical Engineering. Cameron Mitchell. Ah, I saw Mom and Dad. I knew you were back there. Cameron will be going to University of Mount Union for nursing. Claire Cox. Claire will be attending the University of Akron for Exercise Science. Mackenzie Riley. Mackenzie at Kent State University for Psychology. Lauren Price. There's Lauren. Heidelberg University, Biochemistry. Callie Swisher. University of Akron, Speech and Language Pathology. Alec Goodwin. University of Akron, Computer Science. Grace Humphreys. I saw her somewhere. There she is. Malone University, Communication Arts. Tyler Koontz. Waynesburg University, Veterinary Science and Environmental Science. Corinne Greiner. Kent State University, Economics. Marta Miranda. Mount Vernon Nazarene University, Early Childhood Education. Ashlyn Mauer. Ashlyn's also part of our softball team, so I'm sure she's traveling back in the bus right now. She will be attending Kent State University in pre-dentistry. Valerie Stroup. University of Mount Union, Biochemistry. And finally, Shaylee Miller. At Kent State University. She'll be studying education. Let's give a nice round of applause to our Folk Scholarship winners. Okay, we got two more. Two more special awards before I kind of let you guys dismiss before we get to the meat of the meeting. Alright, so our next, I think's on the agenda, if I'm following right, would be our 20-year service award. So our 20-year service award honors our educators in the district or any staff member in the district that has stayed with us for 20 consecutive years or more. So we really appreciate their time and their service to Marlington. And it's quite an honor to stay in one district, specifically nowadays when people tend to jump jobs to either because they have to move, family, whatever. So we appreciate this. So we're gonna bring each one up and honor them, and hold applause to the ends. So our first 20-year award winner, which was actually 21 years because he was missed last year, is Justin Woods. Did see her in the back. 20 years, Meredith Wilson. Also saw her here tonight, Lisa Hall. We only have two more. I did not see them. I do not see Mr. Richard Beamer, and I do not see Ms. Lisa Nervy. We did only have five, but that's what you would expect when somebody's spending 20 years of service in this district. Lisa's been here... Is all 20 years in kindergarten? No? 20 years. But she's in kindergarten now. Meredith's been here 20 years in multiple roles throughout the district. 18 of them I can remember most of those roles. And Justin's been, I think, his entire career thus far in first grade? Almost. So. But we really appreciate it, so I'm giving a nice round of applause for 20 years of service. You know what? I did miss one because it's an administrator. We do that in our administrative office. Can I have Ms. Kitty Mort come up here? Wouldn't that be great? I missed one of my own administrators. That's not good. That was not intentional. I did not. It was right there. Kitty has also been in multiple roles in our district, and now is currently at Marlboro Elementary as our principal. But I think she started her career as guidance counselor? There we go. There we are. So again, a nice round of applause for our 20 years. Okay. So finally, our last big presentation night is obviously we'd like to honor our retirees. We have 10 retirees this year, ranging all over the district. So what I would like, what's gonna happen now is I'm gonna actually bring up, we'll start with Mrs. Sickles. We'll put her on the spot first. So basically, we have their, either their administrator or their supervisor come up and say a few words about, of their each retiree. And then for each retiree, we have a flower and a few cards for them tonight for their time of service. Then I'll say a few things at the end. So if Mrs. Sickles could come on up, we'll start with Sheri.
Well, I'd like to start out with Sue Cobb. She will be retiring at the end of the school year. She's been a bus driver here at Marlington for a total of 32 years. She drove the migrants for 18 years, and then she switched over to driving special needs students in preschool for many years for the remainder of her career. She plans on traveling with her husband and grandchildren to the Carolinas this summer, possibly maybe to Disney next summer. She has been an important part of the transportation team and will be sadly missed. Hopefully, we can talk her into subbing as a bus aide, because we could use you. And it's been a pleasure working with you. Next is Jenny Burkabale. She'll be retiring at the end of the school year. She has driven for East Canton for five years, and then she came to Marlington, and she's been driving here for 28 years. So she also drove special needs students for a few years and also preschool students. She plans on traveling with her mom in her motorhome, possibly starting a small business with selling crafts, homemade baked goods, so many possibilities, but she certainly doesn't plan on sitting around. And she will also be missed. She's been a very important part of our team. Thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you. Next is Barb McCarty. She will be retiring October 1st of this year. She's been driving for the Marlington schools for 25 years. She plans on helping out this summer, driving summer school, hopefully, before she retires. I'm sure she'll be busy with her grandkids, attending and watching various sporting events that she goes to. I'm hoping to talk her into subbing as a driver for a little while, and she will also be missed. She's been an important part of the team also. It's been a pleasure working with you. Last of our bus drivers is Brenda Richards. She will be retiring also October 1st of this year. She drove for West Branch for a little while, and then she came to Marlington. And she's been driving for us for 19 years, so she's been driving a total of 20 years. And she plans to do a lot of traveling with her husband, visiting family all over the different states. And she's been an important part. We've all hung together the last couple of years. And, you know, it's been a pleasure working with you, and we're gonna miss you. So if you ever want a sub, just... So if you ever want to sub, just call me please.
Okay, I do want to thank Mrs. Sickles for coming up. I know that talking about our four drivers, those ladies, these four ladies are absolutely amazing. We run a very large fleet of 27 buses on the road, you know, at all times. And rain, sleet, snow, they're out there and we appreciate it. I more than ever, because I'm also, I'm not allowed to drive right now, but I've actually went through their training and it's probably one of the most difficult things you could do, so please, these drivers are amazing with what they do and they know it. We're gonna miss them. We did have an open house. We ended up recruiting some people, so it was good. Alright, so for our next, we're gonna bring up, let's bring Mr. Rizaletti up from the middle school.
The middle school would like to recognize two retired or retiring educators. Our first one is Sue Neal. Sue couldn't make it tonight, but let's give her a round of applause right at the beginning. Ms. Neal has served in Marlington local schools since 1998. She's a study hall monitor at Marlington Middle School and a track coach at the high school. Ms. Neal is great at her job and she takes on important roles that others may not want without complaint. She's been very dedicated to her district and to her students and athletes. Speaking of that dedication where she is tonight, she's at a track meet supporting her throwers. We're certainly gonna miss Ms. Neal at the middle school and we wish her the best in retirement. And second, we have Missy Leone. Missy is a constant educator who did and does everything to help kids. And I'm actually gonna pause the speech right here because the first time I've seen Ms. Leone since about October and the very first thing she said to me was, "Hey, I heard you got two students from Ukraine. Is there any way I could help out? Is there anything I could give to them?" This happened about 30 minutes ago and it's a testament to who she is. Alright, I'll keep going. Mrs. Leone has been a fixture at MMS since the 1990s, teaching sixth grade reading and language arts. A few quick things about Missy. She's very creative and always coming up with new ideas, lessons, and ways of teaching. She's always pushing for new and outside opinions, including working with the state of Ohio on a fact-finding assignment for extended response essays. Missy's a great teammate, always supporting her fellow teachers. However, most repeated about Melissa Leone from her coworkers and most important is that she's extremely kind, has a great sense of humor, and is good with kids. It sounds like the qualities of a true educator and that's Missy Leone.
Okay, yes, I'm glad Mrs. Leone came tonight. We kinda had, I kinda begged her. I said, "Come on out" since she's been gone for a little while. But she was actually at Marlington Middle School when I student taught there. And so I give, I give that group a little credit because that's actually when I came in. It was nice to actually be an administrator within the same place I actually student taught. So I actually had to work with Missy Leone for at least three years. She just does an amazing job there at the middle school, especially in sixth grade. Alright, next I'm gonna have up Mrs. Weber from Lexington.
Hello again. I have two awesome ladies to talk about who are very important members of our Lexington team. Mrs. Linda Freedman could not be here this evening, but I know she would have enjoyed this. And I just want to say, let's talk about one of a kind. I wrote on here at the top of the paper, Linda, wow, what a lady who can work, outwork many men. So when Mrs. Freedman began at Marlington, she was a sub for seven years until she started at Washington. After two years, she then moved to the middle school. While there, she learned how to change a ballast and she wanted to hold a competition between the janitors, but nobody wanted to take her on. Then she moved to Lexington where she became the head custodian for 28 years. Linda has been the head custodian for six principals, as she likes to tell me. She is more than a custodian to this, to us. She has artistic talents. She works on our decorations for our programs, for our holidays. And many times you see her volunteering off the clock, doing the extras to make Lexington an appealing place for students and staff. Linda never leaves at 1 o'clock. Some extra events that she was part of during her time and she would enjoy telling you about if she was here would be donkey basketball and the mod squad and Relay for Life. Because of her constant cleaning and upkeep at Lexington, we are always ready for students. Her colleagues will always remember all of the years in August with the signs and the caution tape telling them and telling us to stay off the wet wax. During her tenure, many students have walked the halls of Lexington. And we can say that her love for our building and our kids has been warmly received and will be missed. We hope she comes back to visit and to volunteer and we wish her congratulations. Let's give Linda a round of applause. Our next team member is Ms. Robin Rubel. Come on up here, Robin. Ms. Rubel began her teaching career in Codwell as an intervention specialist. She was in that position for 10 years and also taught second grade down in Codwell. In 1996, Robin joined the Lexington team as an intervention specialist with Molly Middleton. During her years at Marlington, she has served as an intervention specialist at grades one and two, grades three and four, grades four and five. She taught fifth grade math and fourth grade math and science. Some of the highlights of her career, according to her, if we go back in time a little bit, is helping her colleagues and students pass all five subjects of the proficiency test. That was quite a while ago. She's also had classes that won the Some Dog Start County Competition and she's been named Teacher of the Year. Robin's love for animals is apparent with her pet drive for the Stark County Humane Society that's held at Lexington and her Kiss the Dog fundraiser where money is raised for our canine units through the Stark County Sheriff. Sometimes we're lucky to get her friend Sophia and her awesome dog to visit our school. She has also been part of Wags for Warriors for wounded veterans. Some of her favorite Lexington projects include the Christmas breakfast staff, or for staff, the rainforest unit, the coastal pet field trip which is going on tomorrow, and Relay for Life. This year, she also added a unit for growing hydroponic lettuce with a setup from Crop King. There have been times when we've heard Robin say that she just needs to take a child home and give them the love they so desperately need. And that's what we're gonna miss about Robin. She has been a great support to all the staff at Lexington and in her hallway. And we are family at Lexington and we know that we will truly miss her. Congratulations, Robin.
Thank you, Ashley. Yes. Linda Freedman couldn't make it tonight because she was sick, but there's, she would have been here. And there's common traits amongst these two. And the biggest one is work ethic, because you're not going to outwork them, and heart. And they both have tremendous heart. You add compassion, you add a little bit of caring, and you add the firm belief that all children can learn regardless of where or what you do in this district and you will be successful. And that's what both of them have demonstrated multiple times, year after year. So I mean, it's a hard day to see these two go. And they both know that, but we do appreciate the time they've given Marlington. Finally, we're going to bring up Mr. Spondiel from Washington Elementary.
Good evening. I may or may not have forgotten my notes at Washington, so, but I got it right here. We're okay. Don't worry, Mr. Swisher. We are very pleased and a little bit sad to honor two retirees tonight from Washington. Our first one is Kim Mitchell. Kim has been with the district for 21 years? 21 years? Give or take a few? Been in the district about 21 years. Kim is a parapro at Washington. She's been in multiple buildings over her career. I got the pleasure to know Kim when I was the high school principal and she worked over here for a year with me. The same traits she has at Washington are the same traits she had at the high school. She has a great work ethic and she is always willing to do what's asked of her. She's never told me no. And when you're in that position, you wear a lot of different hats. You have to do a lot of different things around the building, help in different classrooms, help different students with whatever needs they have. Whether it be hygiene needs, could be academic needs, it could be just having somebody to talk to. Kim is always there for them. She's passionate, she's loving. And we will miss her tremendously next year. I know this was a tough decision for her, but she has already asked me multiple times to still be involved next year in the school in some capacity. So we look forward to seeing her, but we know there will be a hole when she retires. Thank you, Kim. And our next retiree is Mrs. Chris Croft. Mrs. Croft has been with Marlington for 20 years. She is an English teacher currently in fourth grade. Mrs. Croft is an excellent teacher. Her students adore her. And I know just last week when she told them officially that she was retiring, she was showered with gifts from her students spontaneously. And she's collecting them in the corner of her classroom right now as we speak. They are sad to see her go. We are sad to see her go. She is passionate about what she teaches. She's passionate about her students. And I know this was a really difficult decision for Chris. We talked about it several times. She went back and forth on it. She still feels she has a lot to give to students in the Marlington and we agree. And she also has told me she wants to come back next year in some capacity and help out as much as she can. And we will be taking her up on that offer because we could definitely use her services. Even though she's retiring, there was no coasting off into the sunset. She has worked harder than anybody in the building. She's attended all of her professional development trainings. She does everything we ask her to do to a T. She's a professional in every sense of the word and we will definitely miss her tremendously next year, but look forward to getting her back in the building a little bit. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Spondiel. Again, another loss to Marlington. You know, Kim's been with us, as I said, 20-plus years, multiple roles. As I'm firmly aware, she's graciously, no matter what I have asked her to do or move, she has happily done it with a smile just because she loves kids. And that's one thing that's hard to come by all the time in today's world. But she's amazingly passionate. She does everything she can and I look forward to her getting to travel a little bit. And if she wants to come back, we're always looking for help in that position. Mrs. Croft was my first hire 18 years ago. She followed a legendary fourth grade teacher, Mrs. Renee Aikenhead, for many years. She had big shoes to fill. She tutored prior to that. And I couldn't be more proud to say that was my first hire because she's just done amazing things in that fourth grade classroom. And her kids that she's had through there love her. I know my daughter came over, was very excited to see her here tonight. And we really hate to see her go. And Mr. Spondiel's correct. She struggled with this because education is still pounding in her heart. And she asked if, you know, if all things possible, she wants to be able to return to work here in Marlington in the fall in some capacity, multiple days a week, working with students. And so I told her, if I have it right, that will happen. We always look for good people to return. So I do want to thank Chris and wish her the best. Thank you. I'm not sure where we're at in the agenda. Gotta be close here. I got one more here. Can I have Nash Minor stand up, please? So Nash is our first student board representative, as this is my first year as superintendent. We, I was tasked to possibly look into this. Other Stark County schools have student board representatives. So he has spent with us since January? Since January, kinda giving an update to the board on things specifically related to the high school or in itself in the district. He's done an excellent job of covering multiple items in the district and making sure that he sees things that we may not see from an administrative side on a daily basis from a student representative. So for myself and the board, we appreciate the time you've given us and we just want to say thank you and give you this card. This would be the time that if you wish to leave, you can do that and we're restarting our meaty part of the board meeting. So again, thank you and be safe.
Thanks.
It's a matter of most people just do like...
Go ahead.
Okay. Go on with special presentation, the five-year forecast.
Okay, during this presentation, this gives an opportunity to... We have Ryan here from Forecast Five and Mr. Foss to talk about our five-year forecast. Go ahead, Bob. Ryan?
Okay. We'd like to welcome Ryan Gazoni electronically here to go through the high points of our five-year forecast, cover what's changed since last year, and give us a sense of where we're at for this May update, which is required to be filed by the end of May.
Okay, Ryan, can you hear us?
All right, ready to get... Let me know if I can see all right. I will share my window here. Do you have some ice cream, okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so thanks for having me. Been working with your treasurer and superintendent to update the forecast. The good news is overall, there has not been a significant change in the forecast since we presented in November. There are some key factors I might go over, but the overall impact to the bottom line, the cash balance of the forecast, is not significant. It is significant in the district, though, when we talk about things like pipeline. So if you have any questions, please let me know. The first thing we'll show here is the district is based on what we currently have projected as being slightly deficit spending this year by about $95,000. And as you can see, that starts to increase in '24 and then is moving forward '25 through '27. The district is projected to have a positive cash balance through '26, and then that cash balance goes negative in '27, much like it did in that forecast in November. Overall, when we look at your revenue, the property taxes here in blue came in very consistent with where we thought they are. We're not anticipating a lot of changes moving forward. You are still about a year and a half away from going through your next internal update reappraisal with the county, which will be changing your property values. So it's kind of too early to know what's going on. We know that for districts going through it this coming year, they're starting to see some higher-than-normal increases in property values, but they haven't had the last, this will be the first time since really the market heated up with those. So we're still holding on that one. The thing that you'll notice after we look at property taxes is here in orange, and this is your public utility, which includes your pipeline. The one assumption that we're making in this forecast that is not definitive is that there was an agreement between the pipeline and the Board of Tax Appeals on a back payment of taxes and a settlement on the complaint they issued. Moving that Board of Tax agreement was challenged by one county auditor and then went to a court of appeals. The judge ruled that the Board of Taxations agreement with the pipeline should go through, and that has been appealed again to by the county auditor, a specific county auditor, to go to the Supreme Court of Ohio. So if we make the assumption that that is settled in 2024, the district would get, as you can see here in orange, a larger one-time payment for back taxes and then some increases in public utility through the fall. The reason that that does not have a significant impact on the forecast is that the assumption is made that the district will then, in turn, transfer those additional funds out. So revenue increases, but your expenses also increase, which you'll see here in a minute for the transfer out. So it doesn't have a huge impact on the district's bottom line. It doesn't have any impact on the district's bottom line. For state aid, the only real change is that the district's... It came in almost exactly where we thought. The district was posting one specialization set aside, reduction as expense. Whereas revenues, that's the only slight change in revenue projections for state aid. It came in very close to where we anticipated. And then the only other item, once we get past those major line items, is when we look here at all of the revenue, is you did have some increases this year from where we anticipated, and those increases were because your tuition income. And that's for students that do not live in the district. We're not talking necessarily at the moment. We're talking about excess special education costs. Foster place or workplace gets to come in higher once you have usage collected. And so that was a change, and the interest income continues to come in higher than projected. So not a whole lot changed, but you did get a little more interest income and tuition. It had some change in the forecast. When we compare that with what's going on with expenditures, when you take the combined salary and benefits combined, which is your major expenses, the combined difference compared to the November forecast was pretty close. It's not a lot of changes there. When we take those out, we look at purchase services. You did have some increases higher than we anticipated purchase services. Those were in some instructional contracted services, and then a lot of it was in utilities. Utilities had the biggest increase compared to what was being projected. I think you guys had to make some adjustments to appropriations as well throughout the year for that, so that there was an increase there than we were anticipating. And then also on the supply side, your supplies came in higher than we were projecting, and almost all of that was related to transportation supplies. And you had higher-than-anticipated repair costs as well as fuel costs, so those increased it. What you'll notice when we take those line items out, not a lot of significant expenses when we talk about capital outlay or other objects, but you can see, just like you did on the revenue side with the public utility revenue, these transfers out increased significantly in '24, making the assumption that the pipeline Supreme Court case is settled, and you get that, you get a repayment that's aligned with Board of Tax Appeals agreement. If that would come in higher because of the different agreement, or if that was not settled in '24, then your revenue for that would be offset until it was settled, as well as your expenses. So it would not have a significant impact on the district's bottom line. So overall, the district's, like I said, extremely close. The cash balance, I think there's a difference over a five-year period of less than $1,000 from what we were projecting in November, which sounds like a lot, but we're talking about basically between revenue and expenses over a five-year period, looking at $250 million in revenue and expenses, came in extremely close to what we were expecting. So with that, if there's anything else up for any questions or anything I didn't cover you'd like me to discuss.
Questions for Ryan? I hear no questions, Ryan, so I think you did a good job going through those high points there because we don't have any questions. So thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. And if there's anything comes up, we'll...
Questions from the board at all? Mark? Josh?
I got a question for Bob, but I'll hold it for later.
Okay.
I asked my question, so... Okay, no, no good.
All right, I guess we're all done with that, Ryan. Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we're to the OSBA presentation. Mrs. Kathy Krupko?
All right. The House has completed its hearings on the biennial budget and approved its portion of the bill. I went over a lot of the details that are in that. It's very expansive. This has now been passed on to the Senate. They're in the process of conducting hearings. And everything, the final decision is pending. Senate and House agreeing on everything. The Senate Education Committee conducted hearings last week with input from the Ohio Association of Elementary School Administrators, the Buckeye Association of School Administrators, and the OSBA. The Primary and Secondary Education Committee conducted their hearings and accepted proponent arguments regarding eliminating, the elimination of retention under the third-grade reading guarantee and expanding the grade levels that they would be providing reading interve... Reading, intensive reading intervention. The committee also heard testimony about establishing an Ohio Social Studies Task Force to develop new social studies academic standards for use beginning with the '24-'25 school year. The OHSAA sent out two administrative updates, and only one... There is a Raising Canes fundraiser on June 15th that will support OHSAA programs. And I think that should do it. And I will give you all of those. Thank you.
Any questions for Mrs. Krupko? Okay, next up, we have our student board representative report. It's Mr. Nash Minor.
Well, thank you. It is kind of crazy to me that it feels like I just started this yesterday, and this is already my last presentation, but it's really been a great time being here, and I've learned so much through this process that it's really been a valuable experience to me, so I hope it continues in the future. So we are now in May, and this is where I say we are getting to the light at the end of the tunnel. We are almost there. We're just clawing our way to the end. So on the academic side of things, it is our wrap-up time. We've gone through lots of testing. We finished our state testing at the high school last week with science. We have map testing. We had that this week. And then we're also going to have a little bit more next week at the high school. Final exams are coming at the early part of June, and I know a lot of classes are studying for that. But something I like in the high school is that we've been doing a lot with using maps testing along with final exams. So if you have projected growth and you continue to grow throughout the school year, this could also affect your final exam in a beneficial way. You can't be harmed by it. And it's promoting the effort on the maps testing exams, which I think is really a good idea. It means a lot more to the students that way, so it was a good implementation. We also have the anatomy awards here tomorrow, which is always a really fun day that you get to see these anatomy presentations, skits, and everything you could imagine with things to do with anatomies and physiology. So it's a really fun time here in the auditorium. Today, we had our awards assembly, and we presented many scholarships going for a total of probably two hours of an assembly. In totality, the class of 2023, at this point in time, has raked up 700, more than $703,000 in scholarships. So it's been a pretty successful class this year of being able to get so much scholarship money to help pay for whatever's next for our class. For extracurriculars, character counts has been very busy as we're closing up the school year. They had a blood drive last Thursday that was really successful. Had a lot of people come out for that and donate blood, which was a huge help to the blood bank. Last week was the exceptional Olympics at Perry High School, which was, I was able to take part in this last year, unfortunately not this year. But it's a really cool day that you get to spend time with some kids from elementary, some special needs kids, and really get to create a bond with them. And it's really a nice relationship that you get to form that lasts more than just the day. It's a relationship that lasts for a long time, so I really appreciate days like that, and I think they do, too. Tomorrow, we have our Relay for Life, which high schoolers were able to take part in with a donation of $10, and they get out of the school day for a little bit to have some chances at activities and prizes and just a time outside. So it's a good fundraiser as well. National Honor Society had a workday this Monday. Lots of mulch. That's why I chose this picture. Mulch, mulch, mulch. That is a big project that they do every single year that is a real help to landscaping, I'm sure, and they do a great job. They also were trying to help put in a culvert, a cross-country course, which was well appreciated to keep up to OHSAA code. So, and they also went to elementaries and did some weeding, helped with painting, helped in classrooms that needed it. It was a really nice day. Our horticulture is in its spring sale, so they have plenty of flowers to buy, and the sale lasts as long as the flowers do. So first come, first served, and it's a great chance to get some really beautiful flowers and arrangements. Our FFA had a fishing derby earlier, earlier in between the last month. It was a cool time to get a lot of people out. We had a, actually, a really good turnout this year compared to previous years, and as you see, we've caught some nice fish there. So we're not just bringing people out. We're also catching some good fish, too, so that's awesome. For the arts, our choir had their spring concert at the beginning of May, end of April. It was a really emotional time for the seniors, as all the seniors got to have a senior solo. And it was just a really nice performance overall to wrap up the coral season. Concert band also just had their concert earlier this week, and they also were able to put in a new showcase for all the band trophies and awards that have been given out and accomplishments that have been achieved in the past, oh my goodness, probably half a century. There are some trophies in there from Bands of America from the, I believe, the '80s and '90s. So it was, it's really cool that they get to finally present those in the hallways. We also had an art showcase here in the DLZ after the choir concert back at the beginning of this month. It was a really cool night that we get to showcase a lot of the art that people have been doing in class, and we got to display some really nice talent. For sports, our boys tennis team had a very successful season thus far and are not quite done yet. They have the district semifinals tomorrow in Akron, and they also finished the season to be second in the EBC League. I must say, it was really close. They were very, very close to being EBC champions this year, but unfortunately, at their last meet, they lost to West Branch. But they really had a valiant effort through and through, so we're really proud of them. We've also had a lot of success with our double team of Cameron Keen and Nathan Deepold. They've had a record of 12 to 3, which is one of the best records for a double team, for our tennis team, for many, many years now. So that's really exciting for them and all their success. Softball, we've had some exciting news with them. They are currently ranked number two in Division II in the entire state. They, tonight, were district champions and will be moving on to regional semifinals next Wednesday. They also were able to cling the three-peat on the EBC championship, so they've had a really fun, unstoppable season so far, so we hope to keep it going. Baseball had their, have their district semifinals this coming Monday at Louisville. They finished the season second in the EBC, which is a good improvement over previous years. And recently, they beat the number-six team in the state in Division II just this last Friday. Their season record is 13 to 11, but it's definitely on the upswing right now, so they have some good momentum going into that postseason. For our girls outdoor track, they are currently competing, as I speak, in the district semifinals at Salem. Those who qualify out of prelims tonight will move on to finals on Saturday, also at Salem. Here are just some pictures of our league conference meet of some big highlights. Belligram was our EBC Runner of the Year on the girl's side, competing in the mile, the two-mile, the half-mile, and a relay. And then we also have Quinn... And then we also have Quinn Sernansky in the four-by-100-meter relay, going against all the odds, making up a massive gap in the last, I'd say, 50 meters to cling the EBC title for our girls four-by-one team. So, that was a really cool win. On the boys' side, they finished the regular season undefeated in dual meets. They were the EBC runner-ups. They lost to Alliance by nine points. It was, I believe, it was around 120 points, about 130, give or take. So, it was a really valiant effort on their part. And as well as the girls' team, they are also currently competing at the district semifinals tonight in Salem. And those who will move on from prelims will compete this Saturday, also at Salem, to hopefully qualify to regionals. So, we wish them the best of luck, as always. To keep up to date with everything that's going on in the sports world, please keep up with our high school social media pages. We have a ton going on right there and it's really amazing how fast we can get some things done, so especially on the high school, Mrs. McElroy does a fantastic job of keeping up to date and having pictures up as fast as she gets them. So, yeah, definitely keep an eye on everything that's going on as we finish up our sports seasons.
Thank you, Nash.
Thank you, Nash. Good job, good job.
Okay, good evening. This is my May superintendent report. Again, I appreciate everybody watching or that's here this evening. I continue with what I've done for the last 12 board meetings, 11 board meetings, my 12th, you know, kind of sticking with the flow of how I run, how I run this. So, we're going to talk about reasons to celebrate. We're going to talk about some things right now and then what I'll be talking about next month or moving forward, as I like to say. Now, Nash and I usually clash, so this one, I got him. So, we did have our first annual Career Expo. So, this was kind of in collaboration with our curriculum director, Mrs. Kaylee, our career tech director, Mr. Miller, our high school principal, Mr. Farrell, and basically our administrative team that, you know, this is a, we wanted to have as many businesses attend here and allow all of our students, basically eighth grade through 12th, to walk around and just ask questions. So, it wasn't really a job fair. It was just, we wanted students going to college, not going to college, you know, a lot, we wanted them to have an experience to talk to various businesses, to understand that there's a big world out there and we give them an opportunity to see. So, we ended up having, and we did it a little later this year because this was a plan that I wanted to get done and we were kind of pushing it with everything we were going this year, but we ended up having 38 businesses come. And they spent the, about two hours, two and a half hours during the day, and then they stayed through five if anybody from the public wanted to come out and learn a little bit more about the businesses or have a chance or opportunity to learn how they could get involved in the businesses. So, ultimately, we're going to be expanding on this with the Stark Area Partnership, so ultimately, my goal is to do this a little earlier next year. And I would like to, at some point in time, have at least 100 businesses here at Marlington. I would like our eighth through 12th students to explore those businesses and have very specific questions. At the same time, we're going to be having a certain amount of those businesses kind of speak to our students in the morning and just kind of give them an idea of what different opportunities are for them. If you go to college, here's the opportunities for you to come back. If some businesses you do not need to, this is what we'll do if you come over. And kind of talk about that and give them an idea, because a lot of times our students, at least 50% of our students don't attend a four-year college or university, so this gives them an opportunity about what they might want to do when they move forward. So, that was just, it was a wonderful day and we really appreciate the businesses that came out and supported us. So, there's just some more pictures from the Career Expo. Nash touched on this. I just had maybe some different pictures up there too, but we do every year have the Exceptional Olympics, so this was my 17th or 18th year attending. I've attended every year that I've been here at Marlington. It's just an absolutely amazing experience. We had a total of 60 kids between our character counts, our National Honor Society kids, and then our, and then our, our students that went and kind of spent the day, and then we always have parents that come. And this is all of Stark County, so this is thousands of people, so it's hard to put in perspective over in Perry, but they, we've lucked out the last two years with just wonderful weather. It was an 80 and sunny degree day, so it was a little warm. As Nash said, we didn't have them attend. We try to keep our track athletes, if there's a meet that day, we try to have them stand down a little bit because we need to keep them fresh. He did touch base on the, we had an instrumental music concert, but I did, this picture was not shown, so this was the first time we were able to get our entire fifth grade together as one band. Okay, so they, they work all year to get in. Mr. Gregory and Ms. Hale do a nice job and then ultimately, when we planned this, was to have a calmly, an end-of-the-year event where all fifth-grade band comes together. So, they had basically, I would say, one practice before they performed. So, and they did a very nice job, so if you were able to attend the concert the other night, you would have noticed that, but we have a very nice-sized band and we look forward to them as they move on to sixth grade. We did, as you did last board meeting, we got a chance to honor Bill Coe and show him the sign, but then we had the dedication just about seven or eight days later. A little bit delayed due to weather. We ended up having a beautiful day. The sign is up. It fit just perfectly right underneath, as we hoped. He was brought to tears, which is, you know, always good, but it was just, it was a very nice evening to honor him and he had many former players and students come back to honor him. So, it was very nice, so we just want to share that. And Nash touched a little bit on this, so I just kind of double up here. He is correct. Our Marlington Alumni Association, we had the banquet at Hartville Kitchen. They gave out $123,400 in scholarships to our seniors, which is just an amazing amount of money from our alumni. And then when you combine that with our total senior awards and scholarships, that ended up being $703,638 from our senior class and scholarships. And that will include, obviously, and that is the Marlington Alumni Association. Very, very nice moment there, especially this morning. Okay, the now. I'm going to be short. I don't know a lot, I mean, you know, because tonight, we knew the five-year forecast was a big one to talk about. It's something that, you know, obviously, we want to, you know, we kind of focus on, on an administrative side between Bob and I and the, you know, the, keep the board abreast of where we're at financially, based on, you know, we want to, you, we want to do what's right by the district. So, I go year to year. I mean, you can, we got November in there, which is fine, but you, you know, I kind of, I thought about today, I was like, where were we at last May? Which then I came in, in June. You know, last May, we ended up deficit spending in the amount of about $55,000. We were projected in last year's forecast to be deficit spending $2.2 million this year. That's what it said in May. So, sitting this year, a year ago, we had $55,000. We were projected to be $2.2 million deficit spending. Not good. The board kind of said, hey, we need to take a good look at this. And then if you went, if you followed me through, we obviously know we had a, we had a multitude of staff members leave over the summer. I was able then to look at it from the administrative side, how much we can choose to replace or not replace, and we ended up roughly cutting staff-wise about 1.3, 1.4 million dollars. Obviously, we go ahead to a year later. You know, what are we, right now, our forecasts were deficit spending this year $94,918, somewhere in that range. You know, compared to what it said a year ago, it should have been 2.2 million if we didn't make appropriate, take appropriate measures. And obviously, it didn't help that, it also helped support us when we got additional revenue coming in on the tax side, as he talked about in November. This is a $2.1 million difference that was projected from just one year. Obviously, next year, now we're projected to be $725,000 projection in 2024. So, where's that leading this conversation? Because that's the one line I kind of look at. There's basically two lines I look at thoroughly, no different than last year, you know, so as we move into June and July, I will continue to look at purchase services and staff. And then we will make adjustments as we need be. But as I said a year ago, there's, I, you know, we, a district can hurt, but I will not injure it. And that's still where I stand. The next piece I look at is obviously the fund balance. What is our balance? So, a year ago, you know, our fund balance was in the negative in years four and five. It's why they call it a five-year forecast. So, in year four, we were supposed to be net deficit spending, last May, $741,000 a year, and in May of 2022, and then in the fifth year, $5.2 million. And don't get me wrong, it's not uncommon in the fifth year to always be deficit spending because you're, it's very hard to project five years out. And honestly, the state really looks at three years. That's where the state looks at. Are you, are you not in negative or deficit spending within your three years? We go a year later. Today, our fund balance has a negative in year five of 2.1 million, basically. Not five. Again, it shows adjustments that we've made and we're going to continue to make those adjustments, but that's what we look at. From my end, there's two important lines in a five-year forecast. Yeah, I really don't, and I said this in June, I said this in July, I really try not to look at year four and five because if you could historically go back over the course of my tenure here, you're going to see years four or five, but for sure five, most likely always had negative balances. So, that's where we're at with the now. So, I'm, I am confident that we have made appropriate measures and not replacing maybe staff that, at this time, looking at our purchase services. And then obviously, I will get a little bit more in detail in June and July. As you see tonight, we had 10 retirements tonight that we know of. You know, we need to take a good look at that and then obviously, continue to look at our purchase services, which leads me into what we'll be talking about in June and July, you know, is obviously our school year staffing and purchase services. The next line I cut and pasted from the same thing I put on 12 months ago. "I am committed to making decisions that are the best for kids while also being fiscally responsible." This is what I will do with, with Bob. We're going to analysis our current resignations. We'll look at our district expenditures. We'll examine what we consider as district wants versus district needs and obviously, our ultimate goal is to be fiscally prudent, which this district has. They've had no new operating money in 22 years. And then obviously, the next part will be, obviously, we have a couple million dollars in summer projects. The board approved multiple summer projects to be done throughout this district. We had a work session to review those. Then we approved those the last two months. So, I'll have a nice summer project update in June and hopefully, more extensive one in July. Any questions for me? Thank you.
No, thank you.
Public participation. Did anyone sign up for public participation? Okay, thank you. Old business, there's none. New business.
Okay, new business. One second. All right, for the first order of new business, we recommend the motion to approve the following student lunch prices for the 2023, 2024 school year as presented in Exhibit A.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. They are the same, are they not?
They are the same as they were last year and as in your exhibit, you would have, what we'd have the previous price versus the next year's price.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Second one is recommend the motion to approve the following out-of-state field trips as shown in Exhibits B and C.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
One is for our volleyball team and the other is for next year's eighth grade, one year out.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Third one is recommend the motion to approve the following summer grant rates as presented in Exhibit D.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Fourth item. Recommend the motion to approve the following resolution pertaining to the superintendent as presented. The superintendent and/or his or her designee is authorized to issue retirement service award or awards not to exceed a value of $500 per employee.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
This was placed on here, which will be moved to our organizational meeting. Bob felt that every year, we've given something to our retirees, but we have not basically had a board resolution to say that that's okay, that we have done that. So, he felt that that needs to be on there for purposes. He wanted to make sure we did not exceed a certain number.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, the last one, a new business. Recommend the motion to approve the amendment between the Marlington Board of Education and the Ohio Association of Public School Employees as shown in Exhibit E.
Their motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
This amendment amends their current contract. It has, as you can see it in there, it says, the addition says, "If, at the time of death, a current employee is eligible for retirement and severance, the severance payment expense would be, would have been due at retirement shall be paid in the employee's estate as according to Ohio Vice Code 2113.04. The terms of this amendment shall be in effect from July 2020 through, including through June 30th, 2023." This amendment needs to be in there for multiple reasons, one of which is it affects some of our employees that have passed away that have, were able to, we weren't able to do things based, we did not have the amendment in there based on Ohio Vice Code.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Treasurer's agenda, Mr. Fox.
Thank you. I'll give a quick update on a couple of things before I get into the action items. First, obviously, the five-year forecast is the biggest deal tonight from a financial standpoint and I'm thankful that it was at least pretty reasonable at the bottom line as far as not significantly changing. as far as not significantly changing from November. Couple big observations year-to-date. With that, and I know Ryan has only touched on a couple of those things. But, you know, we had a couple areas of costs that were higher than expect, and then anticipated. The two biggest being diesel fuel and electricity. You know, and to put it in perspective, we've spent $217,519 on diesel fuel this year. So you can imagine that that kind of volume changes in price have a big impact on our budget. And as you'll remember, I think it was the March meeting, we asked for some budget increases, or I did, related to that, increasing the budget for fuel by $37,500. But the big culprit is electricity. At that March meeting, we asked for additional budget of $175,000 more. We have a budget this year of $428,346. So as we head into this year, you know, it's an interesting time. We have the forecast now, I'm looking forward to that because that really sets our expectations of what we're going to spend next year. So that'll give us the basis for setting the budgets and calculating those for each budget account. But we also want to look at these expenses, too. We're currently working with suppliers to see what we can save in electricity. Josh had mentioned something at the last meeting that kind of pricked my interest. And we all know that big increases are planned for the summer. So I'm expecting this week coming up, hopefully early in the week, some pricing from some of the people we're working with to look at that. Initial expectations are that we can realize some significant savings. So time is of essence, we need to tie this in. So I'm hoping next meeting, we'll have some good news in that regard. Because again, for perspective, you know, our April bill was about $32,000 a month for electricity. So you can imagine projecting any savings outward. If we can get a significant decrease, will help immensely. So I don't want to be too long here or bore anybody. But I wanted to let you know that we're looking at that. Also, the bus parts, that was another thing that jumped up a lot. Couple points with that. If I understand the mechanic, clearly, a lot of those engine repairs that were significant were related to one particular type of engine that had a certain defect that needed changed, if you will. That could cause big maintenance issues. So between that being taken care of for those buses and if we keep up with our fleet, you know, purchasing one bus recently, et cetera, I'm hoping that we won't have such an unexpected increase in at least bus parts. As far as internally in our office, it's a busy time. We'll be looking at setting up those budgets for next year, closing out things for this year, and trying to make some changes to do things a little bit. I guess more the way I'd like to see them done. We're going to be migrating to a new human resources platform. We recently got, we're working right now to upgrade the computers in the treasurer's office, too. That will enable the office staff to participate in some remote training opportunities that they can't do now, too. Besides just some of the machines literally did not meet the specifications needed for our software. So it's been a frustrating thing for them and should help a lot. That's the quick low down about what is going on in the treasurer's office. And I'd be happy to answer questions, but I want to do, let's open up for that after we go through the action items and raise any questions you have during that time. The first item I'd like to recommend for approval is that the board would approve the minutes of the meeting from the April 26 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Second item on the treasurer's agenda is recommend that the Board of Education approve the financial reports and overview of receipts and expenditures for the period ending April 30, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Just one highlight, just to point out kind of where we're at, too, here with the reports. There's one report, I apologize for heading it, it says "Detailed Report", but it shows our fund balances by fund. It's a one-pager. The general fund, the current fund balance is $10,414,339.99. That's our current fund balance for the general fund. And that's really pretty good at this time of year. We've spent $19,627,000 this year out of the general fund. Received $22,67,000. And we have remaining encumbrances of $1,492,000. So there's still some bills to pay. We have some things to wrap up before year-end, reflecting those encumbrances. One note, too, I wanted to make as well as you're looking at those reports. Ryan mentioned that the interest is one of the reasons our revenue is up this year a bit. Interest currently, year-to-date, we've received $230,766.93. Last year, the interest was $39,882.92. So it's a significant increase, largely because so many, so much of our funds are invested in, you know, secure government-type obligations that are interest rate-based. So interest rates increase, it's been helping us a lot.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
The next item, item number three, technical corrections to bylaws. I recommend that the Marlington Local Board of Education approve the following technical correction to Board Policy 011, name to correct an omission by inserting "The Marlington Local School District established June 11, 1956."
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Quick explanation as to why this is here. One of the things I've had to do as treasurer, which I'm smiling about because I'm totally amazed with how many accounts we've had to set up as far as online accounts, websites, different types of reporting entities. It's very, very different from some years back. So one of the ones that we have to sign up for and have an account for is called SAM.gov. It's a federal website used to manage grants. Part of their procedures now are to confirm business entities for their reporting and for grant applications. And their requirements are that we provide two documents that include both our legal name and the date that the organization was established. Rather difficult to find for Marlington Local School District. So this is creating the second one. The first one that I was able to find was the board minutes from the first meeting back in 1956. So this will help me, I believe, get this account confirmed and active with the federal government.
Nice.
In a nutshell, we have a multitude of many grants our teachers can write, which we can't do next year without having a SAM.gov account. So this is just money that we don't want to give away.
Right. Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Number four, engagement letters with the auditor of state. Recommend a motion to approve the agreements with the auditor of state's Local Government Services Section to compile the annual financial statements for Marlington Local School District for the fiscal years ending June 30, 2023 and June 30, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Explain what that is, Bob.
Yeah, this is for our gap audit for both years. There is a cost to the district to meet this requirement. It's about $11,000 each year. The, by securing FY24's audit as well, too, they gave us the same price, so there'll be no increase for the following year.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Number five, donations. Recommend motion to approve the donations for the April, April 2023.
So moved.
Second.
And you'll read those?
I will.
Thank you.
Do you want me to read them? Or you have them? Oh, you got them, perfect.
Thanks, Dan. From, from "Let's Stick Together", Washington Elementary, $150. From Glowforge, raffle prizes for Washington Steam Lab Donation Drive, $175. Alliance Elks Charities gift for the Marlington Robotics, $250.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, and call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Appropriations. Recommend a motion to approve the appropriation revision as shown in Exhibit P.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
This is $2,000 to cover the two Ashley White scholarships this year, $1,000 each.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Five-year forecast update. Recommend a motion to approve the May update to the fiscal year 2023 five-year forecast as shown in Exhibit Q.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Just a comment. We, I had met with Bob, the finance committee could not meet. We couldn't get together our schedules. So I set an appointment, meet with Dan and Bob. So we went over it.
We both did individually.
Yeah, individually we did, right. Kathy met earlier this week.
Yeah. And Ryan was available, I don't know if he was.
No, not.
But he was available for my meeting, so I had whatever questions I had were handled.
So I appreciate you taking the time and going over that.
You're very welcome. Thanks for getting together.
Josh?
Just wanted to speak about the, Ryan had mentioned that our payment 2024 for next is going from our November forecast of $2 million to almost $5 million. Is that correct, 4.9? As planned right now, that's presuming that the case is settled. Okay. Or dismissed, I guess you could say, either way.
There's no guarantee on that.
No, Ryan's comment was, I asked the same question Josh did. Why would you put that in the forecast? It really makes no difference to our forecast because we immediately, everything that pipeline comes in is immediately transferred out into the 070 account for capital improvements. His response was, based on what, obviously, he deals with multiple, multiple schools in the state of Ohio. And he said that the legislators, correct me if I'm wrong, what he's hearing from the legislators is that this would be settled by the Supreme Court soon. And their recommendation was to include this in the forecast. He said, obviously, he could take it out. It really makes no difference in our five-year forecast, but he was just going off what the recommendation was, what he's done with other districts.
Yeah, it seemed that the expectation is that it'll be fast-tracked, just probably because of the importance to people like us. And that big bump you see that's in the forecast right now for next year is really related to, I believe it's the 2018 and 19 amounts that were challenged that would be sort of back payments, if you will, for what they owe us if it's settled. Okay. What isn't included in the forecast is the TIF agreement with the Meyer project, correct? It is in the forecast right now. It is. I have, I've done, I've reached out to the city to find out what their estimates are about when they, when we would expect that payment because it's actually in there for, I want to say, $172,000 expected for fiscal year 2023. We have not received it yet. Okay. And reading the papers associated with that, that amount seems to come from kind of a hypothetical that was there. And so I need to get a number that I feel is more comfortable with that and determine if it's coming in this year. So think of, did I say 172? I think it's 127. Either way. Yeah, 129,655 is the number. So either way, I'm looking to learn a little more about that. And it could affect things, obviously, if we don't receive it before June 30. And actually, that was the nature of my question. At one point, my question was, is this, should we expect this June 30? Do you have any information on the amount and valuation, so? Okay, the second part to that was that the income tax was going to be split, I believe, in that agreement. Half, I think it's a 2% income tax on that property and half was in the school. I don't know that detail yet. I think, reading through the piece, I remember, I think, said that we would receive, that it was designed in such a way that we would receive 25% of what we would receive. That's a real estate portion of it. Yeah, that's just the real estate part. Yeah, I don't know about the wage-related component of that. Okay, could you look into that and see if there's any idea of what we could be possibly looking at? Yeah, I will be. Awesome, thank you. Definitely. I'm interested myself because that's such a huge.
Is that something, so they would pay that even before Meyer's up and running?
Well, see, I presume it's going to, like the piece I mentioned, it's going to be related to valuation, I presume. If there's a wage component, that wouldn't be an act, that wouldn't be happening yet, I presume. Technically, they have a store open right now there, don't they? They have a what?
Dunham's is open right now. That's what you and I talked about, I mean, we.
Oh, good point, yeah, Dunham's is.
The key question is, which we don't have the answer for because we haven't received it yet, was, you know, any income that we would split between the City of Alliance and us. Typically, an income tax with a TIF, you know, the TIF amount's settled, we get that yearly. So Bob reached out to the City of Alliance, said, you know, we're expecting X amount of dollars. You know, part two to Josh's question is what income would we expect, you know, which we will get. So as Meyer opens and expands, there should be an anticipated number. They probably had, based on what Myers employees had. And I don't know what that is either, and that's where, you know, we're trying to get that answer. So Dunham's income is going to be very small. They got, you know, maybe 10, 15 employees, it's not going to be anything significant, you know, when you're splitting that income tax. But as Meyer opens in the next few years, that's definitely going to be, we'd like to at least have an estimated idea. And the city has not gotten back to us on that either.
So basically, you're already on it and asking all those questions.
We did. Ryan brought up the TIF. I wasn't sure it was in there or not. I know we went back and forth, you know, but Ryan feels, you know, like he said, he must told Bob, it feels like it needs to be in there because we should receive it before the end of our fiscal year, June 30.
Yeah, it was really, he kind of gave us the option, do you want to leave it in there for this year or not? Because we hadn't received it. It was fairly 50/50, but I just told him to leave it there and I'd reach out to the city and find out what the status was. No news yet. Okay.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Okay, we're moving on to personnel. I will, I'm going to ask. I will, I'm going to ask the consent personnel with the exception of, Becca Ryan? Summer. Summer hires. Student, or not student, summer hires, summer school hires, line item number 18 in Personnel. I want to separate that from Consent. Mark cannot vote on that.
So you're going to take out the whole section?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Take down. So Consent and go through, with the exception of line, line 18. If you've got any questions, please ask. Give me, bear with me here. We do have, we have certified resignations. We have two resignations tonight for certified, which makes me happy, stays that way. We have certified, one certified staff hire, that's actually to replace one of those certified staff resignations, which also makes me happy. We have classified staff hire, we, we have a returner coming back to replace, because we have, because Marion Doyle passed away, this is why we're bringing on this, Cat Green. We have two, we have some transfers, so we have two secretaries that were currently employed with us that'll be transferring over to Marlboro as the head secretary and the clerical aide and cafeteria monitor, but they're already employed, so there's two classified staff transfers. I'll be asking the board to approve Eric, Mr. Tanner, additional extended days, he went over, he worked this summer, we did not have help, so he went over on his days. Keep that all right, but that's where he's at, I want to approve that. He's the only one out of our extended days we need to approve for the year, which was nice. I'm asking you to extend, same as usual, the extended days for 2023, '24, so you can take a look at those. We have our normal May, we have our certified non-renewal of tutors. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight tutors that we are non-renewing. We have our non-renewal of our permanent subs, we take a look at every year, we have four of those. We are asking you to approve the certified continuing contracts, in which I'm very happy to have our teachers have gone through the requirements, they qualify based on our eligibility and under the supervision of our administration. So we'll have one, with Mr. Elfe, Ms. Wright, Ms. Burgess, Ms. McElrath, Mrs. Beatles, Ms. Riley, Ms. Lipanga, Ms. Kabasa, Mrs. Gray, Mrs. Valillo, Mrs. Oyster, and Mrs. Quintus. And as always, we have our certified limited teaching contracts, which you can take there, those are our teachers that we'll be bringing back next year, they're under one-year contracts. Asking the board to approve one certified leave of absence through June 9, that's Mrs. Kori Schneider, she needs a leave of absence for the next 17 days. We have our classified continuing contracts, we have three people there. As normal, we have our classified reductions in force, or RIF. So we have a total of 13 that we are riffing. We have our classified that are on a third, two-year limited contracts that we're approving. We have our classified on their second, two-year limited contracts that we're approving. We have our classified that are on their first of their two-year limited contracts we are approving. We have two additional migrant hires that we were able to grab that we did not hire last month. We have our summer grounds hire, June and Linda, same dude that's been doing our summer grounds here, here in their main campus. We have a few more student summer hires, which is always nice. We have a few more supplemental employees for this year that are just track-related or gamers' club that we didn't get. And then obviously, we're adding on to next year's supplemental list, so we have the 2023, '24, we have a list there. We started that last meeting, and we continue to add, hopefully get that as close as possible by the end of the summer.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Okay, next I'd like to do in Personnel line item 18, so I recommend the motion to hire the following summer school, 2023 staff, pending their verification, satisfactory credentials, and BCI/FBI checks as required, as shown in the exhibit, which would be V.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I'll be abstaining, because my daughter-in-law's on that list.
Correct. This is, this is our list for high school, middle school, and elementary summer school staff members that will or intend on teaching. That does not mean they will be paid. As any summer hire, everybody's a time-slipped employee, so the only way we pay them is through actual work shown. So even though they may be board hired, that does not mean they will be paid.
Because we don't know of the need?
Some of it's based on need, I mean, we, we pretty much have a pretty good idea, because we've done this our third year in a row that we've done summer schools, we have, but obviously, if the need drops, then we would just not bring in as many, or if the need would go up, then we would bring back more to the board for summer, depending on what it would be.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Okay, we have announcements, or I guess we have the upcoming events, as you can see here, I mean, we're, we're at the end of the year. So you take a look here, kind of keep dwindling it down for you, but, you know, we can highlight kind of we got more banquet season now. Obviously, our softball, track, and baseball teams are all still actively participating and moving forward, so we look forward to that. We have the Marlboro Memorial Parade coming up on, I think it's 5:29. Obviously, we have some field trips for the middle school, we have Backlarette High School Blackorette, 6:30 at Robertson's Heating and Cooling. We have some elementary graduations coming up, and then obviously, we have our graduation, high school graduation, we have June 4, high school graduation at 2:00 p.m. at the Canton Civic Center. We're excited for that.
Nice. Okay, next board meeting, Mark is going to be out of town.
To take a motion to change the board meeting? Is that a motion, I mean?
Um, I don't think, I don't think we have to do that.
I don't think we have.
I mean, if you want.
Done it both ways.
I mean, okay.
Let's look at the dates.
I can meet Monday that week.
Okay, so the May, or I'm sorry, June 15. We could do that, or we could go to the, are you out the 22nd? Because there's five third days.
I'm, I'm out the 22th.
You are, okay. Okay, can everybody do the 12th? Monday?
What's it look like for you?
I'll check it.
Okay.
It should be fine.
The 12th?
Yeah.
Monday, June?
Monday, the 12th. Uh, yeah, let's hope for me.
Okay, you're good?
I'm good for the 12th.
Okay, so a motion to make it Monday, June 12. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Okay, call the roll.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan? Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
The next meeting is Monday, June 12 at 6:00 p.m. here in the DLZ. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.